I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, one minute's a minute, not two minutes. Okay, welcome to the March 21st, 2019 Town of Riverhead Planning Board meeting. We have a lot on the agenda today, so we'll try to keep things moving along. The first item is a discussion, discussion item for Enterprise Park at Calverton.
Yeah Frank, how are you all doing?
Good, how are you?
Been a few while since I was here on this.
Vinnie Gariallo is coming today, I did confirm with him, so he's probably in route.
Can you also send an updated report with comments on what the board has gotten on this document?
Yeah, a copy of the Vinnie's reports included dated March 21st.
If you could just officially for the record, just state your name and who you're representing.
Okay, my name is Frank Isler. I'm a partner in the firm of Smith, Finkelstein, Lumberg, Isler and Yakubowski, 456 Griffin Avenue, Riverhead. I am representing the town community development agency as the applicant on this request to amend our site plan, our subdivision application. We've sent a letter into the board explaining where we are, and I can go through that if you'd like, and describe what the changes are in the map from what we had before when we last were here. So, you may recall that we were proceeding through a public hearing on a preliminary map application for a 50 lot subdivision. And then, at that point where we were in the middle of the hearing, and I was here before you, the plan segued to a new purchaser who was looking just to get raw land at the site. And the map that we're asking to submit to you as our amendment to our subdivision map application now calls for eight lots. Three of them are going to be sold to the purchaser, they're lots six, seven, and eight. Eight is just a small lot that was created by necessity due to the location of the bike path. And it really is intended to be part of six in terms of development. So, in our contract of sale, which we have in place, I would assume you guys are aware of where we are with the sale of property, okay, let me start with that. In December, a contract was signed with the purchaser, selling them lots, what would be lots six, seven, and eight on the map. The purchasers in the middle of their due diligence period right now, they've extended their first 90 day, and they're now in their second 90 day period, and they are in the process of analyzing, you know, what their plans will be for the site. But, the sale is of vacant land to them. There will be no improvements internally, no site, you know, roads or drainage as part of this subdivision whatsoever. The other five lots that we're creating are town-owned parcels, will stay owned by the CDA. Lot one is the core Pine Barrens area that always will remain undeveloped. And the remainder are actually, lot two is the park, the town park where the ballfields are. Lot three up on the north, kind of east, is the Crumman Memorial Site. Lot four, which is on the east side of the property, is going to be the new drainage area for the Calverton Sewer District. The recharge is all going to happen at lot four, and that's the condition of numerous different requirements that we have with the DEC. For the plant to be expanded, which is in the process of being approved now, we have to move the discharge up to here on the other side of the...
Get rid of the lake discharge.
Yes, there won't be any lake discharge at all. And five is the town parcel down at the bottom in the south in the center of the property, which was the community building there. And that, so lots two, three, four, and five will remain town. They don't need any infrastructure because they front on roads. You'll see that if you look, it's a little hard to see on the scale we have right here, but lot four has access up to 25. And the other lots all are on roads. So, the application that's for you as amended is really going to provide for no curbing, no road, none of the typical things you see on a subdivision map. It's a very simple application, just vacant land essentially, with the other lots being what they are already. In terms of the sequel review, as you may know, well, you do know because you were an involved agency in it, the town went through a, as lead agency, the town board conducted a full sequel review of the 50 lot plan in terms of amending zoning and the urban renewal plan here and the comprehensive plan, they were all amended as part of a sequel process that led to the current zoning that's applicable here. And at the same time, they were looking at the, what the 50 lot impact would be. Since this is a significantly different map and less impactful than the 50 lot in terms of the number of lots and where they're located and developed, we believe that the sequel process that has been taken has, will apply equally to this. I believe you're going to get an opinion to that effect from Jeff Seaman, that the, this map is compatible with the kind of findings that were made in the sequel process that was undertaken for the larger map and the related zoning and land use issues that had come up at that point. So basically, what we're looking to do is proceed on this map now. We are requesting, if possible, that we can be on your April, first Tuesday in April meeting for purposes of your adopting a resolution, scheduling a public hearing for the first meeting in May, so that we can have the public hearing on this map at that point. And I believe we're, you'll have the Jeff Seaman report that will enable you, if you agree with it, to adopt a sequel finding at the April meeting when you're scheduling the March, the May hearing, because that will allow us to now then go to the Suffolk County Health Department at this point on this map as well. We have it tentatively scheduled with them next week to explain to them what we're doing. So, I hope I've explained it enough. If you need any more information, I'll be happy to...
So, all the CDA is doing is asking us to consider a map, a subdivision map, no development, just a map based on what the CDA intends to sell that they're in contract for?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Wasn't there a parcel identified that was to be shared for five districts in the future?
That's the Crumman's...
That's where the monument is?
Yeah. I don't see that legend here. We'll have to look into that, and we'll get back, we'll tell you on either the public hearing or if you want, in advance. It had been a, it would've been labeled on here in the 50 lot.
The past map it was labeled.
Yeah, and I, I'm unaware of any reason why it would've been taken off, so I'm assuming...
Was it, is it the same exact location?
Yeah, it would've been here.
So, that monument, is that where the...
The jets are.
The jets are, and where is that positioned on the property? Is it...
They're on the front, on 25, and there's more room. This lot is exactly the same configured as in the 50.
Town makers, okay.
This, this is not, lot three and lot four have not changed configuration from the 50 lot map that you saw, nor did for that matter four, four was also included in it and five. The only lots that actually have changed from the 50 to now are six, seven, and eight. These other town lots, two, four, three, four, five at the bottom in the core piece, were the same on the 50 lot map. We've just gotten rid of all the development that was up in here in those 50 lots and then going down south on both sides where the runways are.
Makes sense to me.
This lot, the three lot, does include the fire?
It does.
It was expanded from the original, it was originally just a small for the monument, and now it's set to accommodate that.
Right, it's just not, we had had it as a legend on the...
Yeah, just, I don't know why it's not shown.
So, okay, so it, we'll add that to the map, so it'll be on...
Put it on the record when you have a public hearing.
What's the status of the resolution this board did, sending it to upstate? What's the status of that resolution?
Sending it upstate for...
We did a sense of the board resolution about a couple years ago, something like that.
I think, I think you did a sense of the board resolution as to the layout of the 50 lot subdivision. That enabled us to go to the DEC and talk to them, I think that's what you're talking about. That has become academic now because we've changed the map. But we had asked you, and the board was gracious enough to give a sense of the board as to the location of lots so that we could start preparing at that point when it was a 50 lot subdivision, the real detailed engineered plans for that subdivision that we would've needed to go forward, and that was in substantial expense. And we asked for that sense of the board so that if the board had a problem with the layouts and we wouldn't go forward and lay out the map, and some people may have had to check this today.
No names mentioned.
I have a question for you, Steve, before you start with this. Normally if you make a dramatic change like this for 44 lot, which is nice, you get involved, but normally don't we start back at sketch plan before we go to preliminary, have this map reviewed as a sketch?
Actually, we did that...
Then approve the sketch, and then, because the sketch that we approved is not this.
No, but when we did the preliminary and did through the whole GOS, we had a whole bunch of alternatives analyzed, and doing a lot, eight lot down from the 50 and all the alternatives certainly can be incorporated as part of that. And that's what Justin Seaman will be...
I'm just getting into the procedure.
Yep.
And if I may, Joe, the, the reason why you don't have to go back and this can be an amendment is, as I just said a couple of minutes ago, some of the lots were exactly the same as 50.
Yes, that I know.
And what, all we've done is remove lots, really. And so, you're dealing with the same sketch plan except absent lots. It's not like we're moving lots in different places or have a whole different design plan for the map.
Right.
So, the, the concept that you would've looked at at site plan, at sketch plan rather, I'm sorry, is no different than this, it's just this is actually...
Yeah, no, I...
And that's why you can do this as an amendment.
And when Justin Seaman does his consistency analysis, which you will need to adopt at some point.
What does that do?
He's going to present his report at the next meeting. He's going to do that, he's going to flesh out that analysis for you.
Talk to me about lot eight.
Lot eight, okay, lot eight was originally, in the original concept, we were in the sale, it was going to be, it's part of lot six, the acreage that's there. You'll see on the east side of lot eight, that double line that goes there, that's the bicycle path.
Yeah, oh, it's there.
And, and what happened was the location of the bicycle path ended up going where it is currently shown on this map, going up to the town park. As a result of it, it basically cut off a portion of the land we were under contract to sell to the developer. So, what we have in the contract of sale is a provision that lot eight, its development density will be applied to lot six.
Is the zoning applied to lot eight?
I'm sorry?
What's the zoning to lot eight?
It's the same, the whole area's zone the same. It's the new zoning that the town apply, adopted.
High development.
Eight is not separately...
I was just wondering about how many development rights you have.
I don't know, as I'm sitting here, what that would be.
You got 18 acres, two acres of zoning, figure nine.
Well, you'll see, Joe, too, there's that line that goes, the circle. A good portion of the slot is undevelopable because of the salamander setbacks, and that was another reason why it was not a problem for the buyer, that we were having to carve this out. This is solely a function of the bicycle path being approved and located.
Is it still going to go that way?
No, this is the way it is, yeah.
Yeah, the bike path is constructed.
What?
The bike path is constructed.
Oh, yeah.
So, it kind of, that kind of drove the bus on creating this kind of, I mean, this 18 acre, small lot there, but it's, it's, a lot of its functionality is really gone, no matter whether it was part of lot six or not.
At some point, there has to be an analysis made.
There will be. And that would happen when, and when the developer is going to move to develop this, this is all going to come before you.
Yeah.
If, and I say that with a footnote because I know there've been some changes in the town code as to who has jurisdiction over subdivision or and or cyclones between you and the town board there.
Mm-hmm, cyclone, yeah.
And I'm not up to speed on that, so I don't, whoever's going to be reviewing the development here, I guess is the fairest way to say it, that will be, the yields here will all be driven at that time and analyzed, and certainly, the DEC is going to look at this as, once it becomes a, once it's subdivided into these eight lots, anyone, any of these lots that are going to get developed by the new owner will have to get all the approvals from the town as well as the DEC. The town, by going this map, is now able to only go to the DEC for subdivision approval under the Wild Rivers and Recreational Act, Scenic and Recreational Act, and we do not have to go for a taking permit, which is the habitat protections items that you were all seeing in the 50 lot subdivision, where we're going to have to create habitats, grasslands and all that. The town does not have to seek any of, get any of those permits, and that'll fall on the new owner, when, once they have their own plan of how they want to develop it. And the DEC's been on board with that.
The contract is for lot six, do you have to propose...
The contract...
Purchase, yeah.
Is six, seven, and eight, so they're buying the whole...
Oh, oh.
All the vacant parcel is being purchased by one entity, Calverton Aviation and Technology. And that's what makes this feasible, that we can do this with the DEC and that we're, you know, vacant land. So, really, you're, we're taking the 50 and erasing lines on it is effectively what we're doing.
So, runways are out here? No runways?
Well, that, I was going to ask you this, because we've always shown runways on the map, and there was a thought, I'm not exactly sure on who on our team came up with it, but that's, since it's kind of a structural thing, you wouldn't show it just on a subdivision map. We will be happy to show, if the board wants it shown on the map, when we present you by the next meeting with the final version of this preliminary map, we'll put it on. It's up to entirely how you want it to be done. Just like we'll put that, the legend on the, for the ambulance and emergency vehicle stuff up there, we can, my map that I'm looking at here has the runways on it because it was an older version of what you have. So, whatever the pleasure of the board is on that, Dick, or anyone else, we'll be happy to...
Is part of the sale, the runways, the runway part of the sale?
Yes, they're part, the runways are physically on, eastern one is part of seven, physically on seven, and six has the western one.
And I believe they get the easement for the taxiway, is that correct?
They are going to get a, the easement, we're selling them the town's easement for the taxiway on the eastern side that is on Berman's property. We own that, we have that easement now, we're selling it. Essentially, what the town is doing with respect to six, seven, and eight is we're selling all of our rights, whatever they are, including that easement for the taxiway. But yes, those runways are on both of those...
So, in fact, they intend to not only open, open up their business, whatever that's going to be, but they also intend to further develop in some way the rest of the property. They will not be using all the property, I think that's what you're saying, correct?
They're going to be, they're, we don't know what their actual plan is. Under our contract, they are obligated to build a million square feet of industrial building on the site within the first five years from closing, and that their intended use is for aviation, aeronautics, and related technology enterprises. They're not limited to that necessarily, but that's their intended use plan. And so, whether they build the, they do their building on the west side or southern side of the east side is yet to be determined. But, I think their intention is to keep the runways physically there.
And I think we should show them on the map.
I absolutely do.
Yeah, I, I think, that would've been my thought to do. So, we'll...
Because I think they have every intention of using those runways.
I think, I think it's appropriate to have it there, and it was just, it was just taken off...
They're on the other joint.
I'm sorry?
They're on that joint.
Yeah, they're on this, they can put it back without any problem. It's in the system, but for some reason it was taken out and they were making this, this version of the map for you. The map that we'll be submitting is the preliminary map that we'll be presenting to you, you know, for the noticing of the public hearing, we'll have it on.
So, this is not the map?
This was just a, this is the, this is the map without the runway and the legend. Everything else is identical. We just wanted to get, to show you what the lay of the land was for this meeting so that if, you know, you were comfortable with the map, we'll put it in a form that you like it in, in, before the April meeting. So, that would be what we would be doing.
So, these Navy parcels, they're still retained by the Navy, correct?
Yes, and they're not part of the subdivision.
They're not part of the subdivision, but my question is, do they use that for remediation activities?
Does the Navy use it?
Yep.
The Navy is remediating those lots, that's what they do.
Okay, so...
They're, they're solely on their property and don't extend...
Yeah, right.
Right, but, I understand that, but my question is, is they use the rest of the property, and what if other areas that are being sold or identified to have contamination related to the Navy, what happens in that case?
The, the areas that are owned by us have been cleared by the Navy. It was in act, in the act of Congress that gave us this property, that gave the town the property, it was required that they had to, the Navy and government had to sign off that the areas we were getting title to were free of contamination. And the parcel up here, where this pond is, that had been a Navy, that was not included in the original transfer. It was intended to be part of the entire transfer, but it had been, it was still in remediation. Once that was fully remediated and they certified that in compliance with the act of Congress, title came to the town. So, we own this now, but we didn't own it back in, at the time of the original transfer. And that will theoretically be the same, not theoretically, legally be the same for these two Navy lots down here. At some point, if they're ever completely sworn off as being totally remediated, they will come to the town CDA.
Okay, so, the Navy had previously signed off before it was conveyed to the town that these other parcels were contamination free.
That's correct.
Okay, so, that was done when, roughly?
Well, the property that we got at the time of the closing, they were, they had to have been cleared by then.
Ninety-six, huh?
Okay, fine, so, mid nineties.
Yes.
So, since that time, there have been what they call emerging contaminants identified, which they did not test for because they weren't known about in the mid nineties, that it's very possible that they are on these parcels that the Navy once said were contamination free.
That would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My point is, is I would just caution the town and the CDA in their contract that this may fall back on the town, what the Navy said was clear in the mid nineties to what may not be considered clear today because those contaminants were not known about in the mid nineties.
We have covered that in the contract. The contract provides that they are indemnifying, they, the buyers, will be indemnifying us against any environmental issues on any of the property we're conveying to them even prior to their purchasing the property. So, they, we're riding on the guarantee of the Navy. They may have a right to look to the Navy, or we would certainly if we were still the owners and some contamination was found that wasn't known at the time, because the obligation on making this clean property is on the government and remained on them under the act that gave us title, the transfer of title here. So, we're covered by our contract anyway in terms of being indemnified by the current, the new owner if they, we closed with them. And, so if there is any need for anything to be done on these properties, we're, we would not be in the loop of being obligated to remediate, so. But it's a good concern that you raised because there are now these defining things, not here, I have heard of nothing here, but you never know. But if it were to come up, we're protected.
Okay, parcel four, the sewer parcel, where they're going to discharge the sewer effluent. Have they already undertaken upgrades at the treatment plant there, the town?
The upgrades are not yet being done.
The town has bid that, and it came in over the bonded amount, and public hearings to increase the bonded amount are in the process, and bids will be awarded shortly. So, we're, we're, we're ready to go.
The work has not begun yet.
So, there's an approved set of plans by the DEC to, to do this work?
The Environmental Facilities Corporation approved the plans because it's an EFC project. We've got short-term grant, interest-free loan, and permanent financing through the EFC, so it's, the plans have been approved by DEC and EFC for the upgrade. It's a, it's 100,000 gallon phased project, so the first project is the first 100,000 gallons. We can add up to 300,000 gallons within the footprint of the building that will be the first project. And it involves a horse mane of Berman Boulevard out across, under the runway to that, to those leaching fields. It's treated to groundwater standard and will be recharged to groundwater.
That's my question, it's treated to groundwater standards?
Treated to groundwater standard.
So, the upgrade of the plant is to groundwater standards?
Correct.
And it's...
So, with the current effluent into McKay Lake will be...
Right.
...continued, the speediest terminal be amended to, to, to show groundwater discharge north of the ground.
And they put it there because it's north of the groundwater divide?
It's north of the groundwater divide, it takes it out of the Pecanic District.
So, not knowing the use of some of the proposed buildings that's eventually going to go in here, what, you said treat to groundwater standards, but what is being treated? Is it just obviously the sewerages, but what if there was a release of VOCs or something? Would that sewer plant remove that also before it discharges into the new area?
We have an industrial pretreatment program requirement in the code covering the Calverton Sewer District, and any facility that was built would have to be reviewed by the, by the current engineers, H2M or subsequent engineers, at a future time. And if they have to pre-treat, anything other than domestic is going to require pretreatment at the site.
At the site, yeah.
And then, you know, come into our system. The system is not designed as an industrial, you know, you can't just put anything you want into it and it's going to come out perfect. It's all predicated on design, pretreatment.
Yeah, pretreatment standards.
Right.
So, that's my concern, you may be eliminating a problem with the discharge into McKay Lake and the headwaters of the Pecanic, but you're going north of the groundwater divide line, and discharging there may present problems downstream somewhere else, and that's the only reason why I bring it up. The town has wells in the area to the north, and you're north of the divide line, so I would imagine that water's going to travel north, so I don't know if that was studied or if there was any modeling done.
The McKay Lake issue was an original requirement of the Wild and Sea and Recreational Rivers Act improvement for the first Berman subdivision. The town agreed with the DEC, that the effluent would be taken out of McKay Lake and taken up to the groundwater divide line. So, that, that's, that's been consistent position of the DEC.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll give you a version, a, a, our official version of the preliminary map, that'll show the runways and the legend for the emergency... That'll show the runways and the legend for the emergency, uh, recalls. Yep. Those will all gonna be done, yes. We didn't have time to get that done, but it'll be done.
As long as you gotta submit something, you can prove it to the proper scale.
Yeah, just gonna make that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Overlook Homes.
No, is it the same as the one we got?
Yeah. Yeah, this is the same.
Here we go, I can, I can lay it out. Thank you.
All right, uh, so we're here discussing the Overlook Homes major subdivision one more time. Um, the map has now been revised. Uh, it maintains the twenty-foot road width throughout the entirety of the property from Meeting House Creek Road all the way through the southern terminus of the subject parcel. Uh, and to comply with Fire Marshal comments, the plan has also been revised to show three twenty-four-foot wide turnouts at various distances along the length of the road. Um, the plans have also been amended to include some drainage issues along the roadway showing two drainage structures along the length of the road as well as a French drain towards the southern terminus of the property. Uh, the Fire Marshal did review the revised plans in a memo dated March fourteenth. Uh, Chief Fire Marshal said that the site plan has been submitted, has addressed Fire Marshal concerns and there were no additional comments at this time. Uh, we did just receive earlier this afternoon, which I provided you a copy with, we received memo, uh, comments from Mr. Guardiello. There were a number of comments on this. Uh, there were some discrepancies noted between the overall parcel area and the sum of the total of the four lots. Uh, you noted it's possible that it may have taken this right-of-way out of the calculations, but that's something that needs to be clarified and adjusted if possible, if necessary.
Have you seen his comments? We just got about twenty minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I had emailed them as soon as I got them. Um, mentioned ownership of the existing thirty-foot right-of-way should be verified. Um, one of the comments just spoke to the design standards of the major subdivision, uh, including a fifty-five-foot wide right-of-way. Um, I believe through the history of this application and through discussions, I believe the planning board was okay with waiving the, you know, the design standards of the major subdivision with regards to road design standards.
Because it was gonna continue to be a private road and the Fire Marshal signed off on it?
Yep, and the town, yeah, there's, there's no plans to dedicate this to the town. It's not in any condition where the town would take it under ownership.
I think the planning board previously weighed in on that, whether or not you wanted it treated as a major with the roads being designed to town specifications. And correct me if I'm wrong, the town weighed in saying that, like, you desire to do that?
Yeah, this was subdivided, uh, by the former owner. And I think at that point in time, he probably should have done more, but he didn't. But this applicant has never subdivided the property and that's why I'm a little bit really opposed to treating this as a major.
The, the one question I have before you go on, um, Greg, is a question for Doug. I know that the Fire Marshal signed off on it. Has the road width, not the, not the width, the depth, is that to a design? Were you prepared to sign that that's designed to a seventy-five thousand pound weight capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, there, there was another question that was raised was the road construction. The proposed roadway design has included some drainage, uh, but it appears as though it did not include the initial four hundred feet of the roadway. Um, and there was some revisions that needed to happen with the tributary area. I mean, that's just some engineering revisions that I believe the applicant can address. Um, and then there was the question of the need for a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um, that's just a calculation that the applicant's design professional will need to provide. Uh, the total amount of land disturbance from the road construction and the construction from potential lots should be taken into account. Beyond that, the application, the subdivision itself will require approval from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Uh, it's in Article twenty-five, Title Wetlands, uh, Part six, six, one. This approval from DEC must be received prior to the secret determination being made. And when they go make that application, it'll be for the, both the subdivision as well as the ground disturbance for the construction of the road.
We're doing that in this.
Uh, I mean, at this point, plant, you know, if the, if the applicant can address the drainage issues, you know, planning staff has reviewed it, I think we're satisfied. You know, the road, bottom line is, the road is gonna be improved to a much better standard than it is now. It'll be passable, it'll have some drainage. And, you know, we won't have some of the issues with emergency access. As we said, they are proposing a seventy-four-foot wide turnaround at the end of the subject parcel, which would allow for a fire truck or any sort of emergency vehicle to back out without going onto private property.
Doug, do you have any questions about Minnie's comments?
No, I just read them, uh, we have to look at some things clearly, there might be a couple of typos. I would make a comment regarding the SWIP. There's a, there's a FAQ floating around for, um, reconstructing roads to a certain extent where, uh, the DEC looks at that as not included in, um, requiring a SWIP. But that would be up to the SMO, which it really is due for the town. Also, um, if you look at the disturbance for this application, which is just, you know, the roadway area, it's right on the border of the, of the, uh, threshold for area. So it's, I'd have to look at it much closer. I'm not sure that it's included anyway and it's, that's my opinion, but-
Would it be included in the, uh, is the clearing needed for the lots?
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't, would the SWIP substandard-
I don't, I don't think that, in my opinion, I don't think that for this application to be approved, you need to clear any lots. You need to do, do what you need to do to file a map.
It's not just clearing lots, land disturbance, but I think that's not a question for the board. That's a question that, um, Doug is gonna address with Drew. And Drew's the town engineer, he's the SWIP professor.
Well, I mean, he has to weigh in as to whether or not he's gonna acquire it.
Correct, yep.
In my opinion, it's not required.
But once you get the revised plans to us, those are the plans you need to submit to DEC.
Right, yep. All right, agreed.
Okay. Board, have any other questions?
No, we're finally getting there for you.
A little by that.
We'll, we'll be back with-
Thank you, guys.
If the board is not inclined to go with the fifty-five-foot wide right-of-way, I would note that as shown on the map, it appears that the water main extends beyond the existing thirty-foot right-of-way. And, uh, should that physically be the case, then that map would inevitably need to include an easement for that underground utility. I believe it's through lot four. And again, I don't know if that location of that water main is a result of a, a best guess or a map, but I would strongly suggest that-
It's an existing main, correct?
What's that?
It's existing main.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that that main be, you know, field-located, verified by the district and, and field-measured and if necessary, an easement on that map that would, uh, encompass that.
That's, yeah. Me, the water district, if this was a private road, Dick, wouldn't the water district had to have done that back when they did the extension?
Can I defer on that answer?
Okay. Something to look into, right?
We, we, no, I, I can answer that question. The title to many of these old private roads, the expense of analyzing that was cost prohibitive at the time that we had grants to run these pipes. So we generally got permission from the current property owners and did not do field surveys. And, and that's probably why it's wandered slightly out of the area. It's just a function of trying to get the water mains installed in the-
In the right place?
In the, you know, it was in the nineties when the contamination issues were pressing. Um, people did not wanna hear that we were gonna spend time doing property surveys and title reports on private roads where everybody said, look, it's a private road. We all want the water, would you please bring it down here? So that's, that's how that, that occurred.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Young Farm Stand.
The next two items are just items we have on for consideration of resolutions and I just wanted to go over where we're at with them and, um, kind of refresh the board on the applications. And if the board had any questions, they could, let me know. So this is an application for a farm stand, for a six-hundred-square-foot farm stand and a nineteen-thousand-square-foot U-PIC area. It's on, it's at ten eighteen Main Road in Aquabog in the APZ zoning use district. Agricultural production is not the principal and primary use of the subject parcel. However, the applicant gave proof that the fifty-four-acre parcel to the north has an agricultural exemption, had its development right purchased and is under the same ownership. The application was approved by the Agricultural Advisory Committee. Kind of back up a little bit, um, last time we had a discussion about the application, there was a question about could they retain any, any of the trees on the property? So I had gone out with Dick O'Day to take a look. And at the time, the trees had not been located on the plan, so it was kind of doing an estimate. Since then, the Fire Marshal said the, the exit and entrance had to be twenty feet. So that resulted in having to lose most of the trees along the east side of the driveway. I did forward a plan to the board showing which trees the applicant proposed to remove and I didn't get any bad feedback about that. The one tree that can be retained along the eastern side of the driveway, it's just off the gravel air, gravel parking area, although the area, this is the one right here. I can provide a map showing it at first. It's the one highlighted in yellow. So they, they are providing, um, parking for thirty-two cars and the area in front of that tree wasn't included in that count. So what I was proposing that to do was to show the area in front of the tree as not being a gravel area for parking. That way, people wouldn't, you know, run into the tree when they were parking.
Is there gonna be a curb along there or?
No, no, they're not proposing a curb. But at least it wouldn't be gravel and would maybe preclude people from parking in front of it.
Concrete stops though, perhaps?
Um, it's up to the board. If the board wants some other sort of solution, that's fine with me. And then I, that would be a condition, just showing the change on the plan and then, um, labeling the three trees to be retained and the rest to be removed. That plan I gave out does show which ones they're proposing to remove. Then some other conditions I put in, um, which I had discussed with the applicant when we went out to the site, was that there's a line of existing shrubs that crosses across, cross to south across that parking area, proposed parking area. They had indicated they would be okay with relocating those shrubs to the west side of the driveway. So that's a condition. There is an existing well that was, would interfere with the parking area, so they're proposing to close that off and to put in a new well. So I just included a, a condition about-
Is there public water there? Excuse me? Is there public water there on the map?
It's an irrigation well, just a-
No, no, I mean, on this, it, like, across the property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not proposing any water to the farm stand though. So I just included a condition, if it's over forty-five gallons per minute, they need a permit from the DEC. I have no idea what your draw is.
Very.
Yes.
Just an aside, but could you check with DEC because I think they've raised the seventy.
I checked on their website.
The seventy. Because they're talking about firms and well calculations, anything over a hundred thousand gallons.
I'll check, but I did check the website before I wrote this up to make sure it was forty-five.
Huh? Per day? A hundred thousand gallons per day, yeah, which is seventy gallons per minute. Which would be very interesting.
What size well do you need?
Oh, like a five-inch well, just submersible. Just gonna be like a drip irrigation type of thing.
No, it also could be that this is a state regulation and the local regulation in DEC is still forty-five.
It's for Long Island, the forty-five, that's what the website said. Um, also that they need to get their permit from, um, DEC before they get, not DEC, DOT before they get their building permit. And I did include a condition about, that the approval is contingent, contingent upon the parcel with the farm stand and the adjacent parcel to the north remaining under the same ownership and that the parcel to the north retain the agricultural exemption. And should the ownership of either parcel change so that they're not under the same ownership or the primary use of the parcel to the north is not ag production, the approvals contained would be null, void. And then, and if any further expansion of the farm stand or the U-PIC operation, they would have to come back for further approvals. And then just for the signed permit for the farm stand, you would have to get a signed permit from the building department. So that's pretty much it for that. I don't know if you wanna keep one of these for yourself?
Keith, is there any issue with, um, Keith, right?
It's Alan.
Alan, I'm sorry. Your brother was Keith, was here last time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any issues with the conditions that she listed?
So that's that one.
You don't, you don't like-
There you go.
Possible in this situation, traffic-wise, I mean, they, they complain around that little hook of traffic here. Some sort of signage, you know, a driveway, whatever it can be, to make people aware that there's people stopping here going into that driveway.
Well, there, there will be signage indicating that there's a, one driveway is an entrance and one driveway is an exit.
They fly around there. I do.
I don't think the DOT said anything about signage for like driveway ahead or anything like that, to my knowledge.
No, I think they said just enter, exit, stuff like that.
Yeah, they just wanted entry and exit, right.
Yeah.
Okay. That's my thing, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hope to open floor, get it done before.
I don't know yet.
Try it, right?
Try it.
Memorial Day is only two months away. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Gen Dot condo map.
Okay, this is, I don't know if anyone's here. All right, this is for, um, Gen Dot Associates, AKA Countrywood Village, for a sixteen-unit retirement community at four fifty Middle Road. It's a, uh, three-point-six-acre parcel in the Residence RC zoning district at four fifty Middle Road. They already got their special use permit, they got their final site plan. So this is the final approval they'll need.
This is just the condo map, right?
Condo map, yes. Uh, it's for construction of fifteen dwelling units and conversion of an existing single-family house into another unit, so. Sixteen condo units, um-
No, you just, you need this map to go to the state with your perspective.
Yes.
It's the one you filed, finally, to handle.
So they did require, um, point nine eight of a Pine Balance credit and eleven point oh two ag preservation credits. And the only conditions, um, were that they pay their three thousand dollars per condo unit recreation fee and that, um, prior to signature of the condo map by the planning board chairman, that they give us a Mylar copy of the map and three paper condo maps matching the Mylar.
That's on its way.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me know when they get here and I'll stop down and sign.
Thanks, it's gonna have them in the next couple of days, I think.
Just give me a shout.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Next item has been adjourned, that's item five, uh, subdivision of Hen- Next item has been adjourned, that's item five subdivision of Henry Silverman. Item six, Whiting River cross access.
Rick and Charles. Rick. Charles. Yeah, I'm passing out a map, so.
This is, this has been here before.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, no, it's-
Finally, finally, finally. This is a-
The never-ending-
Cross access easement that was put on a map years ago. And the strange thing about it is it goes across and then there entrances coming west and south.
Charles, I'm passing out the copy of the approved subdivision map that shows the easement and also some aerials of showing. I didn't give copy to you, I think you have it ingrained in your memory, Rick has dreams about it at nighttime.
Years ago, the board actually approved a recommendation to change this, but it never got past the town board. And so Mr. Scherls' clients that would finally like to get this done, we've discussed it with the town board and the town board has agreed that it's appropriate now to terminate this and just have cross access between lots, which is what we do with everybody else. And so what we came to you for is to get a recommendation again to the town board to terminate this and we're gonna have all the owners sign a petition to that effect and then eventually abandon that easement and then agree all to cross access between these lots.
So Charles, are you looking for a written recommendation from this board to the town board?
Yes. Yes. Not a resolution. Resolution would be appreciated if you would, if we could draw it up.
Resolution.
Resolution would be better than-
So, if the board's agreement, I'll prepare something for you next meeting.
So could you just point out exactly where it is that's being abandoned? See a lot of the lines.
This, this easement was put on, it crosses all of this and comes all the way back down here. It's thirty-five feet in from the road, it's twenty-four feet wide.
And why is there a need to abandon it?
Because you can't develop any of the lots that are here easily.
Well, these are already developed, right?
Only-
Yeah, that's bringing me-
What?
The, where you think the McDonald's restaurant that you see, it can no longer be constructed as shown on the easement. The planning board, when they approved the site plan for the McDonald's, basically abandoned that
That portion.
That portion of it, so now to do the, that easement would have to go through the back of their parking lot, down to the Walgreens drugstore if it was gonna continue with. I mean, I don't, I didn't look at the record as to why the planning board did it at the time, but I actually have a copy of-
So it wasn't, it wasn't for future road widening or anything like that, a dedication for road widening?
No, 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 no. Actually, this is the McDonald's restaurant that was approved, this is where the easement was supposed to have gone, but you can see now that the sanitary-
It was back quite far off the edge, I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this doesn't-
This is, yeah, this is, this'll become a racetrack to beat the light.
It becomes a service, it'll become a service road.
You're gonna have crisscrossing traffic all through this whole thing with development, so to do the cross access. The one parcel back here, Venetia, this is the, this is the parcel of my clients right here, this is all gonna be developed as one parcel. And I believe they're putting a traffic light in for that, so from this point, the cross access easements are only gonna go through three parcels to avoid this whole racetrack. Well, to twenty-five A, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare.
This one and this one?
I think all of these, one, two, three, four, yeah, the funeral home is down here and then from the, from the funeral home to our parcel is gonna be Venetia.
Where's the vet?
Funeral home, Venetia.
Yeah, the funeral, funeral home does not have the easement.
Funeral home is fully paid.
Weren't there two of them that were in front of us?
Yeah, this is the other one. The other, Venetia is in front.
Venetia and there was another one, six?
Sixty-three, thirty-nine, that's ours.
Six, three, three, really, that's it.
Okay. All right, well.
If, if the board's in agreement, I'll prepare a resolution for your next meeting. Okay.
Can't believe it.
Do it this eight years.
Okay, next item is item seven, Fadoon Barn. Charles, that's you.
Stay here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one second.
I can pass out some- This is the covenant that we're discussing today.
This is the other half of this.
This is, this is two thousand and six.
Right, but Demchick was the one-
Demchick is, is different.
I know, but it's, it's done at the same time.
Yes, yeah. This is a floating zone concept.
Why are we doing interpretation?
Because what happened is the applicant wants a barn on his property and he went to the farm committee. The farm committee said, we're not sure if we understand this covenant, we wanna make sure that we get it right, so they asked this board to weigh in on it. And, I guess everybody has a copy of this map?
Doesn't the zoning board appear to be doing interpretations?
I don't know if it was so much an interpretation as just to say, do they understand that this is something that's allowed by this covenant? And I, I think that it is, and the question that came up that Ms. Daley and I were discussing was, how did this covenant affect this parcel? Because what it says basically is that you can have a forty thousand square foot area with a residence and a barn in it. Fadoon does not want a residence, he just wants a barn, he farms his thirty acres right next to this, and that was part of the subdivision. And the idea was that he needed, he could have a house and a, and a barn, he doesn't want a house and a barn, he has a house there already, he just wants a barn.
Where's the house?
His house is down the road. Oh, not on the property? No, it's not, it's down here. It's down in these lots that are on Riley Avenue.
Okay.
Right here.
Which one, which one is it?
He and his parents live.
No, this is good to look at, because this is the one, right, it's David?
Yeah, that's right.
This is the one here.
Right.
Yeah. And it's on, it's on here. So all he's asking for is a determination that, what it says here is that he can have a barn in this area, it says he can have up to six thousand square feet. And what was of concern originally was, it was already six thousand square feet on the property, so this was a new covenant that was put on so he could have, if necessary, a house on thirty plus acres and a barn. And so all he wants is a barn. And it seemed to me that, that the covenant was quite clear, but apparently others thought that it wasn't.
So the question is, a couple of questions, but the question, first question is, the existing barns, were they part of the six thousand square foot calculation? Or you're saying that the proposed barn is in addition to that?
The, they were already, the addition was not part of this one acre with six thousand feet on it, no, it was not.
So, the interpretation that you, that you have and your client has is that it's in addition to-
That's right.
What was already there?
That's right, because that was already, it was there on the map even at that time.
And the building lots, this is the original signed Mylar right here.
That's right.
Okay. There are two building lots here that are reserved already.
That's right, that's for his daughters, yeah.
Okay, well, for whoever, but, you know, you said he didn't want any residential lots.
He doesn't want any, what this says is he can have a residence and up to six thousand square feet, what he's saying-
Aside from these two?
Yeah, and he's saying, all I'm looking for is just a barn, I don't want a residence, I have a residence, my family has residence. So he's just simply saying, all I'm asking for is on the forty thousand square feet, this area is to have this barn, okay? Now, he's got one barn already. He does have one barn. And what's the size of that barn? That barn is close to six thousand square feet, that's his big unit that's here. Yeah. But that's exact, that, that can't be counted in the six thousand. Yes, that was, that was part of the original approval.
So if this interpretation is granted, as you're requesting, would he be able to build a house? Or is this, this would be the last thing he would be allowed to build within that area?
I guess if he could build a twelve hundred square foot house, but he isn't one house, so the answer is no, he's, he's not asking for anything else, that's it. So if we do a resolution, we'll put that, make sure we put that in the resolution. That's fine, that's okay with him, yes, he doesn't-
Okay, also, the floating envelope, they call it, they, why does it have to, you're showing it here, why does it have to be right here? It could be anywhere on that forming property.
It could be, but it, that made more sense farming wise to him, that he could have these two barns, I guess, adjacent to each other. The existing barn is, is being used? Yes. And where's the entrance to that barn? Off of Riley? Uh, yes, he doesn't, he comes from, off Riley Avenue, yes, right here. So they'd be doing both of them on, on Riley Avenue?
Would, so you would not be adding another curb act?
No.
I, I don't know that I necessarily agree with the location. The homes that went in along this subdivision, this is gonna be right in their backyards and they purchased that property with the assumption that there was conservation easement, open space, so I, I think that relocating this somewhere else, maybe behind this other barn or not in the immediate backyards of these other residents, would be appropriate. And that's using the same theory that was done over on Demchick, remember with the greenhouses? We put them as far away as we could from the backyards of the people.
And there is room on the back, where the recharge base is. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that's upsetting, and we just did this, this, we said here's an area that you could put it in, so if you put it over here, I don't think it would make a big difference to him.
So where would you, where, where are we looking?
Well, I mean, I don't wanna-
Well, there's a recharge base enough here, and there's a, there's a robe there, where you can get access and put the barn up here. And I think Mr. Carey's saying that the preference would be maybe over in this area, back of the other barn, and I don't see that as a problem.
So, you're saying you're looking at having it here?
Well, let's look at this, this is what really we're looking at.
Look at the detail, look at the detail.
Thank you.
Okay. It's in back of the other one. Let, let, let me just check with him, I'll get back to you, I think, I don't think he'd have a problem with it.
It might be to his benefit if he moves back here, because then he could, he could still put a residence there if he's allowed to.
Yeah, though, I don't think it's, it's not something he's really planning. And it would be pretty small, because-
He's limited, he had, he's a trial lawyer.
He's limited to six thousand, so he takes forty-eight out of it, yeah.
Four, eight, oh, okay, I understand.
And I'd also just like to be assured that the use is directly related to agricultural. No trucking activities, no mechanic shops or anything like that.
Not that I know of.
Well-
No, I mean, I'll get back to you and say yes, but I just, I've never discussed that with him. He said to me, he's using it as a barn for his farm. What was he growing there?
Potatoes.
Last year, I think he just grew potatoes, yeah. The year before he grew potatoes.
So you're gonna go back to your client, ask him about-
No, I'm just gonna go to the location.
Okay.
That's okay.
And specific use for farming?
Use only for farming, yeah, that I don't think is a problem, I think it's just a question of where we put it.
If his client agrees to putting it behind that barn, do we need a resolution? Probably would, just for-
You definitely need a resolution, and I just, I just wanted to point out that you're, you're setting that envelope when you do this.
Correct.
So, I, I, I didn't see where people were pointing, but the forty thousand square feet will be determined by this and then if he wants to put a house in that twelve hundred square feet someday, it's gotta be inside this envelope that's, that's being proposed.
But I think he's proposing the entire six thousand envelope.
Just for the barn.
Whatever it is, but I, I just, I just want everybody to be clear that what your board is being asked to do is impose the forty thousand square foot envelope and then agree that that's where the barn to be.
We need a public hearing, so, do you need a public hearing?
No question, do we need a hearing on this? For interpretation, for the interpretation, I mean?
It's not an interpretation, the, the, the use of interpretation is, it's a, it's utilizing what the covenant says, is that the board's to apply where the forty thousand square feet would be, because nobody knew at the time the map was approved where that would be.
And now we're setting it.
So you're, so there'll be some legal documents which are gonna say, that's-
Oral progress.
The covenant said this, the board has determined this, and now this is the answer to what the covenant said.
Do you see a resolution?
Just resolution.
So, well, he's gonna get back to us first.
If he gets, that's my, Doug is pointing to my question, if he agrees to that location, I can have a resolution for the next meeting.
And the specific use?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we'll get a map to show you.
Sure. Good, thank you.
Good.
Okay, next item, item eight, AT&T at F fourteen Grumman Memorial Park.
All right, so we have yet another exciting application proposing to modify an existing wireless communications facility and upgrade existing equipment. We've received a twelve page site plan, radio frequency safety survey report prediction, as well as a stealth pole structural opinion letter. The subject location will be to an existing wireless communications facility located on the town-owned F Cal property just to the south of the F fourteen Grumman Memorial Park. The existing facility consists of a hundred and twenty-five foot tall stealth monopole tower and related ground level equipment located within a approximately five thousand square foot compound surrounded by a chain link fence. The ground level compound itself is screened from the view of Middle Country Road by an existing row of significant vegetation. The top of the stealth monopole is visible above the tree line. The RF analysis reports submitted by the applicant, which was prepared and stamped by a New York State professional engineer indicated that the worst case scenario for radio frequency exposure was equal to two point five percent of the maximum permissible exposure level established by the FCC. The structural analysis report, prepared and stamped by a professional engineer, last dated November first indicated that the proposed AT&T loading will not have an impact on the structural integrity of the existing stealth tower and it was the engineer's opinion that the AT&T appurtenances may be installed without further analysis. The tower modifications consist of installing six new antennas, six new quadplexers and three new twin triplexers all mounted within the existing hundred and twenty-five foot concealment pole, as well as the routing of new cables and equipment from ground level up through the tower. There's a number of new ground appurtenances that are being proposed, I'm not gonna go through and read every one. It was not a referral to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, was not required for this application and as with all of these applications, a post-construction analysis of the installation needs to be performed by a New York State licensed engineer prior to the issuance of a certificate of completion or C of L.
Who's operating on the pole now?
There are a number of, so the RF report doesn't detail the users, it just gives a T-Mobile, there is a radio here listed for Comac Fire Department, I'm not sure why Comac Fire Department would have something out so far and it looks like there's other antennas which do not have a, a user associated attributed to them. So I, I couldn't, I couldn't give you the exact list of what companies are on there currently, we just have an inventory of the equipment.
But the RF report was, took everyone into account?
Yeah, the RF report took into all the-
And it was signed, it was stamped by a PE?
Yes, sir.
And the structural also was stamped by a PE?
Yes, sir.
And, to add all that equipment, he's saying it could take that load?
Yes.
So-
Yeah, and it didn't, it, it wasn't, it, it is a stealth pole, so there's no, you know, there's not gonna be any structures that are protruding from the structure so it wouldn't impact wind loading or anything like that, but yes, there was a letter prepared by a professional engineer stating that the proposed loading would not have an impact.
To drill it, to put these things in the ground is eight feet wide.
No, I just, you know, when you start adding more and more and more equipment to a structure, at some point, it's gonna be overloaded, but if the PE says it's good, it's good.
Yeah, unlike the other ones that we've seen in the, in the past couple of months, this is all new, this is, they're not removing anything, this is all new.
Yeah.
It's not replacement in kind, correct.
Yeah, there are the installation of them.
So this generator, is there a generator on site already?
It did not indicate that there was, I could find out. I know there's been comments on previous applications that we would like to see multiple carriers utilize one generator rather than install new ones. I do have a resolution on, if you'd like to table it, I can get clarification from the applicant and we can address that if the board wishes.
Do you have any information on the generator, does it have sound attenuation on it?
We probably remember it very rarely, just, I think it's once a month.
This is the same parcel we were talking about earlier, that is gonna be dedicated for, you know, emergency services in the future, so it could have a- This is the same parcel we were talking about earlier, that is gonna be dedicated for, you know, emergency services in the future, so it could have an impact in a few short years.
Um, there is a significant detail sheet here on the generator, I mean, if you want, I can read it when I finish this, and before, I can get you an answer before we vote on the resolution.
Okay, that's good. You could also amend the, to make sure they have sound attenuation on it.
Alrighty, let me get you an answer, and then we'll take that up under the resolution.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Next item nine, Oakwood on the sound.
Yeah, yeah, they will, they will. Yeah, oh, they will, yes, but we want it to get approved by you guys first, before we do that.
So before I forget, and before we get into the project, I just wanted you to bring up a couple of typos that you would need to amend in the resolution. Page four. The first way, I put down two hundred and twenty cubic yards of sand, when it's actually two hundred as per the plan. And then on page five, under number one, towards the bottom of the page, it says chapter twelve, that's the old designation, it should be chapter two nineteen. And then on page six, number five, I put down, um, sand word, I meant C word in the second sentence. And then at the, um, second to last line, I included, including of such maintenance work, the of should come out. So, that's just cleanups. Um, we had talked about this application fairly recently, um, we had gotten some comments from New York State Department of Parks about protecting Wildwood Park. And, uh, the town's consulting engineer had requested some additional information on the temporary sheeting, which would protect the park, um, and also some information on annual fill of sand. Because the applicant wanted to be able to add additional sand on an annual basis. So, just to backtrack, this is for a rock revetment of four hundred and sixty linear feet with two fifteen-foot returns. And a bluff restoration, including terracing and planting of vegetation such as beech rose, northern bayberry, beech plum, and beech grass, according to a New York State Department of Environmental Conservation permit. Um, and the installation of temporary steel sheeting during construction at the eastern end of the revetment. So, they did provide some additional information, like I said, um, the town consulting engineer found it to be acceptable, I don't know if Vinnie wants to say anything about it, but, um- If the board has any questions, but I think they tried to minimize the potential impact. I just wanted to bring the board's attention to, um, page six, actually, bottom of page five, number two, it goes on to page six. I put down a, uh, five-year duration from the date of the resolution. For, the approval would last for five years, and that any request for a renewal should be made thirty days prior to expiration. So, this would allow them to do the sand fill for five years, essentially. Um, most of the conditions are boilerplate, except number five, where I say that the annual maintenance fill of two hundred cubic yards of clean sand may be added to the revetment and area delineated by the C word and landlord limit of sand backfill. For a period of five years from the date of the resolution without a further chapter two nineteen application. If the revetment is determined to be built to plan and remains in good condition, the applicant provides one month notice to the town planning department before such work will be performed, and that such work otherwise conforms to the chapter two nineteen permit granted by this resolution. And the applicant provides a current permit or current permit modification to the planning department from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, since the DEC permit didn't go into this yearly mitigation of sand. So that's pretty much all I want to talk about, unless the applicant, or his representative, or the board has any questions.
We have no questions.
The revisions are okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you mean the conditions?
Yeah, the conditions and the, the amendments.
The conditions are-
They brought some of those to my desk, so.
Okay.
I guess we're okay.
Okay, it's on for today, right?
It's on for today, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Should we stick around for the-
I don't think we have to.
You're not gonna change your mind?
Generally don't, between now and then, no.
Tommy, if you're on the clock, you can stay, it's not gonna-
Next item ten, area real estate seven eleven.
I just wanted to give the board this copy that Ed had requested.
Thank you.
I had gotten the, um, the revised plans and the new elevations fairly recently, um, so I haven't had time to review the site plan, but I thought I'd put this on the agenda for review of the elevations. The board had wanted to be wowed, so I just wanted, the applicant wanted to get some feedback, so.
Well, we had been forwarded a, uh, a building that was, where was it, in, uh, Oyster Bay or something?
Oyster Bay, yeah.
And we didn't really like what we saw, and that's why we asked to, to see something that we, this is what we originally saw, right?
Yeah.
With the clock and-
That was from the, um, chairman of the ARB, he, he provided that.
This looks like the Rocky Point seven eleven, except for the ends are a little bit taller, with your three dead bushes at the front. Um, I, you know, to get my support, I, I hate seeing you waste time and money, 'cause that's what you're doing. This is what it's gonna take to get my vote, this or the equivalent. This is a, uh, I hate to use the word ugly, 'cause somebody did this, but it's not the attractive, rural-looking seven eleven, you know, that I'm looking for, and that would get my support. And I hate to see you waste time and money on these plans that, I don't know about the other board members, but it's not gonna get my support.
You know, we, we were asked to try to, you know, match the flavor of downtown, not copying anything, that's why we went with the brick and the culping. I asked my client if I could do something similar to this, but for some reason, they do not like this particular design that they-
Saying that particular-
So that's why we tried to give you the, you know, the towers here, to give you something similar to that, again, I think Eric's probably better at speaking, I'm not a design person, I'm not a, you know-
I mean, the intent was just, you know, it's, it, we know it's kind of a rectangular building as it is, so the, the two towers, we felt provided a little bit of massing that would make it more contextual with the area, 'cause there are multi-story buildings across the street, and certainly the, the residence to the east, you know, is a two-plus story residence, so we felt like the towers were gonna provide the massing we needed, without making a giant building, you know, there's, there's a balance between calling attention to the seven eleven so they can get customers, and calling attention to a building just because it's a seven eleven. So we're trying to walk that fine line, and I guess that's where we're kinda stuck in the middle, and to Mr. Krasnoff's point, the, the other photo that you're looking at, that was a bank that was retrofitted, and I know he's having much difficulty getting this-
Much larger facility than what you're proposing, there's no question about that.
Yeah, and with the smaller windows, and, um, you know, there's a certain element of-
Can you imagine McDonald's in Motta Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's what I was kinda hoping, we were gonna see something that you look at and go, wow, that's an attractive McDonald's.
Is that what you thought?
I thought you want, you didn't want us to do, you didn't want us to do contemporary, you wanted us to do brick, you didn't want us to do, like, what we did in Oyster Bay was stone on the bottom and board.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't care for that one, I don't think you did either.
I mean, I was told you wanted, I was told, ask for brick, so, you know, we're trying to focus-
I, I don't remember that, I remember saying we wanted to be impressed.
No, I, I under- I understand, but when, um, we were sent some stuff from the, from the town, you know, it said that we should, you know, look at what's downtown, and they wanted brick, and they want the real brick, so, and that came from the town.
I'm just-
I'm not opposed to giving you stone or hardy board, that's, that's fine with me, I was just told this is what you wanted.
I just wanted to clarify, I do have the, the, um, ARB correspondence here, and it talked about there are several significant historic buildings across the street, consequently, we think it would be best if the primary facade materials were brick with wood accents and trim in a quality complementary design. We want a quality design, we don't want, like, fake history. So, that's, just to clarify.
Okay, that's the ARB, their advisory.
Right, so if you want har- hardy board, or stone, or, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not, I can't go modern and contemporary, because I know it doesn't match, you know, as cool as I think that looks, and that might wow you, that doesn't really match the flavor of downtown, so I'm trying to, you know,
See if they get spikes next door.
Balance everything, and keep everybody happy, and again, I'm willing to do what you want, I'm not trying to force something on you, I mean, obviously, you know, we, we have the size that the client needs, they wanna have, obviously, a certain amount of, you know, visibility, you know, windows, they don't wanna have, like, tiny little windows so people can see in, and it's, you know, it's safe. You know, and then the rest of these things are, you know, where they have the refrigeration and stuff, we even added, this is just mock, just to add a little style to it, but again, that's a choice, you know, and a personal choice, but you wanna share?
Yeah, just going back to the Motta Tucker McDonald's, is it, is it the roof line that gives it more character, or the materials of the building?
I know Ed, you know, wants to be wowed, but I think, you know, this, I'm not gonna say this is horrible, I mean, it's a lot better than the, the last one you sent us by email. I don't think you're far off here with this brick, I think it looks nice, and it's consistent with what's in the area. Um, the only thing I may point out is, is, you know, we need to have these big seven elevens and the, the trademark colors, I do like just the simple, I mean, it, I know it doesn't stand out as much, but once somebody knows it's a seven eleven, they know it's a seven eleven, if they wanna stop for whatever they stop for, I don't think they need to be hit in the face with, with your trademark signs all the time, and maybe a little, just a little less windows, I think it would-
It's not gonna face the street. When, when you, when you say-
Yeah, I know, but still, you're coming down the road.
Yeah, this is facing the street.
This is, right, in the updated layout, just so everyone remembers what the layout is.
That, that changed the last year.
Yeah, this, this is the new layout, everyone needs a reminder. Does everyone want this, or do you have a number?
All right, we've got-
This is square footage of this?
Yeah, I just did think, I guess you'd-
Um-
No, no, not, not this.
You said you want more facade here.
Well, this seems much larger than that it's going to be.
No, this is, this is this building, this is the same structure, so it's a three thousand, give or take, square foot building.
Okay. Okay.
They should take a short poll if they have the support they have, they won't have mine, if you have to re-vote, it's all night.
Well, I'd like to have, I've been, Ed, you were most helpful, I'm trying to, I wanna make you happy, I'm trying to-
The first question is, is we want brick or not?
Brick.
Brick.
Sure.
Okay, so we're settled on the brick, just to remind-
Okay, which is what-
We're settled on the layout, we're settled on the brick.
Okay.
So now I just think it's a matter of making it, you know, look as nice as possible.
All right, so what do you, so, so, um, open, Eric can make some notes from the design standpoint, and tell us things you'd like us to tweak.
I don't want, I'm not qualified, I don't wanna design your building.
No, no, I don't, I mean-
You're a design professional.
No, no, I, mm, yes, you, you're correct, what I'm just saying is suggestions that you might like to see differently, or changes that we can then come back to you and try to have many, the consensus happen.
Is this, is this something you wanna see, that's basically what he's asking.
I'm happy to look at whatever he provides, but this looks like the Rocky Point, I urge you to draw that, except for the two little caps, that's Rocky Point, it's gotta be, it's terrible, I'm sorry, I don't know how to describe it.
Well, I, I think what I'm hearing is, at least one of the planning board members doesn't wanna see so much branding on the building.
Right. I mean, this, this is softer, much softer, the way this is shown, the sign here, and I, I think less windows too, and more, more brick here.
The one thing I've noticed with seven eleven during my visits is, whenever windows based that, that are provided, they will fill it up with merchandise and signs.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Unless you restrict that, and I'm not, and I'm saying that it'll still give the, if you, if you have a restriction in your code that they shouldn't fill it up, some towns do, you'll just have your clear windows, that's what your code says.
And it may be a condition, and it may be a suggested condition of approval from this board, that you don't have as many infill signs within the window space. Going back to what he was saying about the brick, I, I, if the brick was gonna be used, one thing, this is, we, we saw this in a recent building that approved in the downtown, and it was a stamped brick veneer.
No, this is brick.
No, you, yes, you were very clear.
And-
Yeah, you, you would, that's why I said we did a brick building, you were clear, we told you that.
It looks like a brick colored tile, so there's no texture, it does not warmth, there's no patina, it looks like a brick colored glass tile, you know, something gloss. So that's, when I, I made that suggestion, I was trying to steer them away from that material.
Right, you asked for real brick, which I agreed to, and that's why I did this style, because I, again, Karen just read it, but I had the impression that that's what you felt fell into the historic downtown, as opposed to-
And I think you referred from the board that they like the brick, now the question is-
Right, the middle part, not so historic.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it would be, I don't think that the main style of the building is particularly terrible, I just think maybe it could use, like, this, this element here with the, with the wood and the columns, something along those lines, and maybe some more architectural interest to the, to the-
To the roof line.
To the, to the towers.
Do you want, you want both towers, or would you like one tower, or you're okay with both, the symmetry?
I know a lot of the buildings, you know, you can see it right on the areas, the buildings across the street have the doghouse windows, so contextually, if we were to extend the roof line across-
I feel bad, they're gonna happen, that's not, and I, and I know this is not, that's what I was trying to do, Ed, you've been most helpful, and I'm trying, I'm sorry that, you know, I'm not giving you what you like, but I'm trying to ask you if there's things that I can do to make it-
A lot of the buildings in the area, the bank has the doghouse windows.
Make the sign look a little more like this, you know, and just get rid of this trademark stuff, and do something to hear a little better, and I think you're, you're getting there.
Just, he put some doghouse windows in there, which, you know, the bank has them, Perkins has them.
Well, we didn't wanna cut, you know, originally, I thought about that for, like, across the street, but then we were told not to copy, so that was originally what, I wouldn't necessarily have the towers, we thought maybe we would make that faux thing, that's originally what I suggested, but then when we were told not to copy anything, I, I eliminated that because it was kinda copying what was across the street.
You can copy this if you want, so.
Could you maybe, just, just, I don't know if the board would like this, but, like, um, this, these pictures, the towers had a little bit more, they had these elements below that gives it some interest. You know, maybe you could do something like that.
You know, maybe fake windows with a seven eleven, you know, something to make it glassy.
Those, 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 um, those pieces are generally made out of styrofoam for construction purposes, they become nothing but a breeding ground for birds, and you have to end up taking them out.
Well, I wouldn't recommend styrofoam, that's just- Well, I wouldn't recommend styrofoam, that's for sure.
What we typically see in a lot of the new construction is you get a wood frame construction that's covered with plywood, and it has an ephes, styrofoam type of insulation, and then you place whatever veneer that you want over, it could be stucco, it could be wood, it could be brick, whatever. That's the standard traditional method of construction, unless you, unless, unless we dictate a higher quality standard, which is what I was trying to get at with the real brick.
That's what you said, it's gonna be brick.
Well, you asked me to do the real brick, I mean, so we'll, so that'll be the, we're not using ephes, we're not using that stuff that you can, like...
And I don't wanna sing, sing well, it's ephes, it's just, it's just a styrofoam type of insulation, that's all it is.
But maybe instead of, let's say, these signs, you could do some sort of brick design here.
Or a fake window, or something, you know, brick design, some little architecture pleasing to the eye.
The two towers makes it look like a castle. I just don't know that, I mean, it's just a lot of wasted space for you, right?
The reason we thought the two towers was appropriate in this case, though, is if you go to the area and if everyone doesn't have these...
The symmetry?
We're set back a lot more than a lot of the surrounding buildings, so it just provided more massing, you know, that, instead of a singular tower, that would make the building look off balance, now that we're parallel to the road again, it's symmetrical, and it would just give that additional height, since we're set back further than everything, that was kind of the idea.
The one thing about seven elevens, though, it's not typical drive-by, people know where they're located, they know where they are, they're gonna go there, it's not an, oh, there's the seven eleven, I didn't see it.
You're right, but they're hung up on this, they, they, you're, I agree with you, they just are hung up on...
I understand.
Signage and stuff like that, and...
And we're hung up on our work downtown.
Right, no, no, I'm...
And off the record, I'm saying that as a frequent customer of seven eleven, I know where they are.
What is the height of, from here to the top of the tower?
It's just under thirty feet, I don't think it's marked on there, but it's an additional ten feet above the actual roof line, so it's, it's close to thirty feet.
So let's do some kind of features on these and do something better in here, too many windows.
Well, when you say, when you say too many, can we maybe shorten them and keep the same amount of glass, so it's...
Are you looking for like millions in the window stand, or are you looking just... No, just with all that glass, all you're gonna see is, you know, six pack of Budweiser, $1.99, carton of cigarettes, twenty dollars, you know, the more you take away, it's not gonna... Yes, and less opportunity for putting those impulse signs in there, and they will put them in, and it becomes an enforcement nightmare.
I mean, I think what they have here on the windows looks rather attractive with the...
A lot better than that. And Eric, if they have, um, visibility, if they have...
Well, I'm not saying any of this, but, you know, it's not...
The architecture, the architecture's not gonna drive in, the visibility... Yeah, the architecture's not gonna drive in.
One seven eleven sign and...
I can tell most people go there, they don't care about the architecture.
Yeah, but I'll tell you right now, I don't think they're ever gonna do this sign again, they need to have their logo, so we're gonna have to figure out how to put their logo. The last time they did that out here was in Melville, and they said they'll never do it again, so it's something we're gonna have to...
Melville where?
Bluewood in one ten?
Yeah, on one ten, that's the last time they did the seven dash with the word eleven as opposed to the actual logo, that's the...
June, July eleven.
So that's gonna be a struggle, and this is, you know, their storefront, they obviously want the visibility into the building, so that's a compromise we're gonna have to try to figure out with them. You know, of course, their impression of this before we went to seven eleven, they wanted the full-on light bar, you know, internally illuminated sign above the storefront, so we're taking baby steps to get there, but, Erwin, I guess we'll have to take some of these comments back to them.
You think we might be able to lose a panel or two?
Yeah, me, I, I mean, I think if we look at a different window system, we're gonna have to look at a different window system and make sure, because again, this is more like a standard storefront.
And maybe have it come up a little higher.
Yeah, the panels, or maybe the panels in between, I forget what they're called. What are they called now?
What are they called, lights or something like that, I don't know what the, the actual pieces are called.
They just snap in, those things, they look like window panes, separate panes.
Exactly, yeah.
Eric, do you think we should, why we're here, do we discuss any signage now, or should we wait till, what do we, what...
Um, I, I think we kind of talked about it already, I think the consensus on the board here is they prefer some sort of design elements in the tower, not signage, and then kind of sign just over the door preferably and downlit. I mean, it sounds like that's...
You mean like the doos, the doos net, or, yeah, okay, okay.
Which is what we provided there with, with the paint, but it looks, it sounds like it's still too much for the board.
And do you even want this element on the side, or should I just remove it and make it...
Yeah, those were faux windows, just because now that we reoriented the building and the building's cheated westward, that east side of the building will be exposed a little bit, the west side of the building's gonna have the trash enclosure next to it, so you're not gonna see it, but the east side you might see a little bit, so we just provided that for...
Well, I don't know the biggie for me, the front is the biggie.
Okay, 'cause we can always landscape along the side of the building too, as opposed to providing that, if it's not gonna provide any visual interest to anybody here.
So where are we with making the pro and the con of trying to make the tower a little bit more interesting? Are we, want us to try to do something with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two towers are okay, try to come up with more interest at the roof line and modify the design element within the tower as far as...
Yeah, I think you, just for the board's consideration, I think you could have an interesting design element just in brick, like with a different pattern of brick.
Like the angles and stuff?
Some sort of design in the brick, perhaps, that's an option.
Well, I think they're gonna show us, yeah. Well, they, they know the concept we're looking for.
Seven eleven, how about a round sign?
Six, seven again?
Seven eleven, how about a round sign, something square.
Oh, that's them.
I know, that's been a bolt.
Yeah, that's them, those.
Hi. Like to see revision.
Yeah, looks up to the app, yeah.
Okay. The only other thing, we had a request, and I think we, you had already agreed to this, a dedicated easement parallel to the river?
Yeah, that's, that was before I even met with you, I was asked for it by the supervisor, it's just, you know, eventually you might build out a walking path, you wanna connect it, that was always fine.
Yeah, it'll be blanket in nature to adjust wherever.
Before we even started, that was fine, that's, like I said, every time you've been asking me for stuff, I'm trying to give you what I can, the brick, whatever, the, you know, sorry you're wowed, but I'm trying to, again, manage everybody's, you know, sizes as well.
We're getting there.
I know, and I appreciate your patience, and hopefully we can... Does this all have to be done, like, formally again, or can we send something?
No, I think you should funnel through Karen, and she could, as long as it's a color PDF, could you do that?
Yeah, 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 sure.
We could, we could take...
To try to get some, right, so we can try to, and like, hey, like this, don't like this, right, can we, is that okay with everybody, so...
Yeah, that's great.
We all, we all get the emails.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure it was okay with how you guys work, if we could, that's what I'd like to do, so we can break around.
Okay, sorry, but...
Oh, I'm, you should be sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that, I know you, I would've given you that if they said I couldn't, I...
Walking in great direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you, Eric, sorry to put you guys through it, but... We've been on with this for a long time.
You're welcome.
Okay, no public hearing scheduled, are there any comments from the public on the resolutions, any public comment on resolutions? Yes, number one, we're gonna table, so...
I move resolution number eighteen, classified secret, and grants approval for Young Farm Stand.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution eighteen for Young Farm Stand, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is approved, number three.
I'll move number nineteen, condominium map of Gen dot Associates to approve proposed condominium map sixteen unit retirement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution nineteen condominium map of Gen dot Associates, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll make a motion to move resolution number twenty for Enterprise Park at Calvettin to schedule a public hearing, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty to schedule a public hearing for Enterprise Park at Calvettin, Epcal, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, question, when is that gonna be, when will the hearing be? First meeting in May, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved. Greg, where did you go? Did you see anything on the...
So, I, I went through, there's nothing specifically that calls out decibel levels, I went on their manufacturer's website, I didn't see anything either. I'm sure that's information that we can get, I would just recommend including an amendment to the resolution, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall demonstrate that the proposed diesel generator shall include appropriate noise attenuation and shall comply with the town code regarding...
Okay, where you gonna put it?
Uh, it'll be down towards the end of the resolution, let's see.
You got one, two, and, like, three and four? You got five, where are answers?
Well, this is for...
The first resolution?
Yeah, we did. The, oh, you mean a motion?
So we will include it.
I think it's just, what did he say, adjourned.
So after we list the result, after we list the site plan, be it further resolved prior to the issuance of a building permit, we'll use that same language, and be it further resolved prior to the issuance of certificate, so it'll be, it'll be between the second and third resolved, just include a condition that they shall comply with the town code noise ordinance, and that they shall demonstrate that the unit shall have appropriate noise attenuation.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll move resolution twenty-three as amended.
Twenty-one, right?
Twenty-one. Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a walk-on resolution twenty-three, we're on twenty-one right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, this is the walk-on, all right. I'll move resolution number twenty-one, which grants administrative approval for site plan application to modify existing grade for the AT&T property, I'm sorry, for the...
Yeah.
Yeah, for the Epcal property.
Second the motion? Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-one as amended for AT&T at Grumman Memorial Park, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved.
I'll move resolution twenty-two awkward on the sound, granting the chapter two nineteen permit for the construction of the wall, so moved.
I just wanted to say as amended.
As amended, I'm sorry, I was about to say as amended.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-two awkward on the sound, chapter two nineteen permit as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved, and the walk-on is twenty-three.
Okay, I'll do it again, move resolution twenty-three, move administrative site plan for the AT&T facility at twenty-five Down Lane in Jamesport. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve...
As amended.
Resolution...
Well, this, yeah, this one's not amended, this one is just...
Yeah, motion made and seconded to approve resolution twenty-three for AT&T in Jamesport, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved. Okay, any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board, any public comments?
I'll make a motion that we move the minutes of the March seventh, two thousand and nineteen planning board meeting, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the March seventh, two thousand and nineteen minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, minutes are approved. Okay, next meeting date is Thursday, April fourth at seven PM, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Everybody have a great weekend.
Yes.